I've been sitting. It works better. It works better than everybody else. What? I didn't click in the.
Good afternoon and welcome to the fifth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and spell your name for our commission's reporter. And if you're here to testify for or against any proceeding at this commission, please come forward, introduce yourself, and be sworn in by Ms. Araya. With that being said, commissioners, we're moving into the public hearing. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one eight dash one four one five four.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and me on behalf of People's Seafood Inc. On my right is the manager and partner, uh, director, Victoria Park Clark.
Thank you. Do you have any additions or corrections to the investigator's report?
No corrections.
Thank you. Ms. Araya.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the July twelfth, the limited hearing testimony was provided to Commissioners Min and Lee prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing non-commissioners?
Uh, motion to approve transfer application number one eight dash one four one five four.
Second. Let's move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one eight dash one four one five four is approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Araya.
Calling agenda item number two, application number one eight dash one three four eight nine. Mr. Luke.
In the rest of effect, Doug Morris, an owner, present with counsel, Wayne Luke.
If you had an opportunity to review the investigator's report.
Yes, and may I make a comment?
Yes, you may, Mr. Luke.
Yes. We get our mailing list from the real property tax office. That's where, you know, that's where we get it from. Whatever they send us, that's the list. Today, Daniel Sato, investigator, showed me that for some reason, the list got cut off and seven names were missing. Okay? And what I'm saying is, you know, we get the list and, you know, we complied with the liquor laws as far as the mailing and everything, what the list we had. Even without the seven names, it doesn't have an effect on the mailing, the mailing order protests. It's just that you have this clause about a hundred percent of names being available. And that is gonna be, you know, a problem. Okay, I'm getting all my list for the real property and we expect that to be a hundred percent. But that hundred percent also covers small businesses. And I'm gonna tell you, no one, you know, you gotta get one hundred percent list of small businesses. And I can tell you now that no one can tell me that they can get one hundred percent of small businesses. I'm just bringing that point up to show that this hundred percent requirement is, you know, is not feasible.
Well, let me move on here. Ms. Araya.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, sort of related to the issue that Attorney Luke has identified, licensing has requested a two-week continuance for this matter. Public hearing kept open in order to verify the accuracy of the affidavit of mailing, master list and mailing list that were submitted in connection with this application.
I don't see anything wrong with the affidavit that we submitted.
Can I have a, um, can I have a motion to convene to executive session?
So more.
Second. Moving second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. We're now in the executive session. Be right back, Commissioner.
It's stupid. It's stupid, but that's what it's been.
Okay, we are now back on the record. Commissioner Min.
Uh, yes, before I make my motion, I'd like to note for the record that the commission does not have the authority to waive notice requirements that are required by statute. Uh, that being said, uh, my motion is to continue agenda item two, application number one eight dash one three four eight nine for two weeks and for the applicant to work with the administration to remedy this notice issue.
Public hearing kept open.
I, yes, I'm sorry, public hearing kept open.
Second.
Could, um, could I just ask if there are any protests?
Well, let me, okay, before we do anything, let me ask you this. When does your term expire?
Uh, we're in the, we're in the time period. I apologize to my client because this is something that is gonna come out in other cases, in, could come out in other cases. So that's why I brought it before the commission. Yeah, that's.
Looks like you're here for free for your client, right?
Yes, I am. I am.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye.
Oh.
Agenda item.
Was there any protest?
Hold on, let me, let's move forward, right? Agenda item number two, application number one eight dash one three four eight nine is continued for two weeks and the public hearing will be just available, uh, excuse me, open and Mr. Luke will work with the administration to remedy this situation.
And because the public hearing is left open, we can, um, deal with the protests or letters or testimonies of support after the next year.
Yeah, I, we just wanna know whether there are any protests official.
Your question is, sir?
Was there any protests?
You can notify with.
Yeah, technically I don't announce until.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll deal with any protests after the next year hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Luke. Okay, moving on. These are license applications. Our special license application, agenda item number three, application number one eight dash one four five eight two from Bamboo Catering Inc.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jason Takemura of Bamboo Catering. Uh, J A S O M T A K E M U R A.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is, this is my event planner, David Webb.
Commissioners? This is for a special general license from nine AM through eleven PM on Saturday, August fifth.
Mr. Takemura, can you briefly explain your event?
Uh, we have two, two events on that day, uh, both first birthdays. And basically, uh, first one, I believe, starts at about ten AM and second one to follow about roughly about four thirty, five o'clock.
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four five eight two.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one eight dash one four five eight two is approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four. Application number one nine dash one four seven five four. Ms. Reed.
Afternoon, Commissioner Nicole Reed, N I C O L E, last name Reed, R E I D, Secretary Treasurer for Arts, Culture, Merchants, etc. Group. And this is Marty Simjam. He is the manager at a licensee on Hotel Street.
And Ms. Reed, for this first application, can you briefly explain your event?
Our event is between Smith Street and Uwani Street on Hotel. It is to celebrate and, uh, public safety, close the street for, um, first Friday. Basically, we had a closure beginning of about eight years ago. That permit structure was no longer deemed as appropriate by DTS. So we had to change the structure into, uh, event versus a public safety closure. So in order to, to make sure that the buses aren't colliding with clients, um, we were asked to put on an event. So every month, we have a public mural that's painted and it's displayed on the street um, and then posted on the side of one of, uh, the buildings. And to offset our costs, we serve beer and wine. Live music is provided, um, from eight to ten PM. Um, and we're very good at cutting it off at ten, um, the music so that we're mitigating any amplified sound on the street as early as possible. The event concludes at around midnight, but for public safety, we have HPD from the beginning until three AM along with, um, six security guards on site. And those are one at each entrance point, so those are four, and then two at the beer and wine tent. That's in addition to having two blue light police officers, one sergeant, and four walking patrol on that footprint, that one block. Um, we also offer porta potties for our guests and clients. Um, and we, of course, keep the streets closed until the bars let out at two and then we do our best to clean up and return the street as soon as possible to the public.
And, um, what time are you proposing to an liquor service?
Ideally, to cover our overhead. If we could go to the midnight call time that is allowed legally, that would be ideal as eight PM till ten PM. Um, we're having a hard time breaking even with those two hours of service.
And is there any reason you can't start earlier?
We are working with the city currently to explore our impact on the busloads. So what we know is the city has told us seven thirty is the earliest we can close given how many people we're displacing, um, one block, uh, down and two blocks up onto the adjacent streets. And we want to be sensitive because it is peak rush hour in downtown on a Friday. So the city currently, DTS, is exploring, uh, the ridership levels to push it back maybe a little earlier to seven instead of seven thirty to allow us to start at seven thirty with that half an hour setup time instead of eight. So it's in the works, but we wouldn't really know if that's gonna come to fruition, um, maybe for another week or two until they get back to us.
So you'll, you'll actually find that out, um, and that's the part of this, um, the great special event, um, with DTS.
Yeah.
That that's the timeframe.
That's the one they've told us right now that we have to operate, but they are exploring if we can push it a little earlier.
Their, their end times have always been existent about midnight?
Um, the event goes to midnight, but the end time for the permit is three for this closure. Just to maintain, 'cause again, our paramount concern is crowd control and pedestrian safety. So we continue on and they're fine with that. Along with HPD, they see the need for us to keep the street closed and patrolled until three AM. Luckily, we've been able to get it clear and returned by about two thirty. So we've been trying to get that as close to, uh, as early as possible.
All right, um, you know, we, we do, um, take the opinion of the neighborhood board, um, seriously, you know, even though it is an advisory board. Um, were you able to, uh, get a copy of this letter that was sent on behalf of the Gateway Plaza Tenant Association?
Yes, I saw Mr. Luke's letter.
Okay. And you have any response?
Um, I can tell you that I pull all the complaints through a request for information for our event. Um, and so far, it's been a pattern that is his complaint. Or one person complaining every time we have this event. Um, historically, I know he has opposed any street closure that has liquor sales in that area. And although I've done my best to reach out to him, um, on email and ask to take decibel readings or be able to, the best that I can do is take decibel readings at his building corner to make sure from where I can stand that we're not violating any of the health code, um, that's set forth for us. And beyond that, I have, really, it's arresting because I have no ability to appease, um, his complaint particularly.
And, um, we also received, um, a request from, um, Chulon Schubert Clark, who's the president of the Chinatown Business and Community Association. She's also requesting, um, a ten o'clock end time. Were you able to meet with her or her association?
I met with her, uh, in the beginning when we were gonna try this out. And ten PM is, is her particular requirement. I, I don't, I don't know if I'm probably capable of convincing otherwise. Um, all I can say is the people are still there. It's not any less noisy because we're not selling from ten to twelve. Um, and so far, we don't have any incidents that we can show are directly correlated. So I would like to at least try to go to eleven or twelve to see if we can manage it and if it's the same complaint despite us going longer as it was when we were shorter. I don't know if I can ever address any complaint that would continue like that, so. I'm not saying there isn't an issue, but we're doing our best to mitigate it and, and still break even and, yeah.
You have to understand that we need to respect, uh, the downtown Chinatown community board, even though as Vice Chairman stated, it is a, only an advisory board. But it speaks for the community. We, we need to respect that.
I appreciate it. And I, I do think it is worth noting with the board. Um, there are no business owners on it and the election statistics show that two percent of the population living in that area votes for that.
I understand that.
I understand. Thank you.
And if my memory serves me correct, so, because you've been providing this commission a post-event report, uh, at least the last three reports that I've seen, you've averaged losing between thirty-five, two thousand dollars?
Not that much. It, it's hopefully going to be less this month because the previous months, we had some odd mitigating circumstances. Last month, we got rained out, so we lost a lot of money. Um, and then the previous ones, either we were still learning how to set this up because we're business owners, not event producers. So our start time maybe was at eight thirty instead of eight. So we're hoping this month, with the experience under our belts, we can get it open at eight to see what the possible revenues are to maximize from eight to ten.
Okay, thank you. I have a question.
How for your liking, is.
Commissioner, do you.
Are you, um, still planning? What, what time do they terminate?
Oh, they terminate at ten as per DTS law, yeah.
Oh, so that's the DTS requirement.
Yes, that is the DTS requirement, ten PM.
Uh, motion to convene to executive session.
Second. Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, we are back on the official record. I see we have, um, somebody that would like to testify. Please come forward.
I swear you in, and I'm gonna run a three-minute timer.
Yes.
You swear that the testimony you give today is going to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Hello, Lee Stack. Hope I don't need to spell it, but I can. L E E S T A C K. Um, I'm a stakeholder on Hotel Street and in the area and I've come in before each time because, um, the community and the neighborhood board has a longstanding policy of ten PM, so cut off sales for alcohol, which they reaffirmed, I believe, at their April meeting twice. And I've put it in my testimony before. So every time they come in for twelve, I think it's important to come and say no, the community has said ten PM and, um, I think it should be ten PM and that's a reasonable compromise between business efforts and residents in the area and other members of the community like the Shell, which is also a business and mixed-use residential area where the cutoff is ten PM for alcohol and noise. I'd also like to point out that for years during these closures, the street closures, the bars ponied up money, um, to cover police costs for street closures without any alcohol on the street because they didn't want competition for beer garden on the street. So for, I don't know, three, four, five years, um, the bars all contributed to the closure. So the emphasis sort of on we're losing money, we're losing money, we need to make money, we need to go longer hours, that didn't seem to be a consideration before when the bars all contributed to cover the cost of the police in the closure.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? I just have one question. So refresh my memory. When the first Fridays originally start, what was the alcohol cut-off time?
The first Fridays originally were a walk around the neighborhood with no street closures. And everything that had alcohol was in people's venues. They were in their businesses. So people would have maybe a glass of wine, uh, something like that, just for customers who came in the door. But it wasn't an alcohol event. Um, and even then, they started closing Hotel Street off at some point, not right away 'cause it was sort of a walk around. No streets were closed. Um, and then they started.
Do you remember what the date and what the time was for the, when they, the event went onto the street, the city streets?
And it still wasn't on the street. They just wanted them to close the street without, this is what she's getting at, without any people on the street. 'Cause they were worried that the buses might hit somebody. So they closed Hotel Street without any people on the street and it kept people off the street. But they would cross over, but they, they weren't gathering on the street.
Okay, but then we started, uh, they started gathering on the street, setting up beer gardens and everything.
This, this year, this has been proposed.
Prior to that, you know?
Not unless it was a block party.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Commissioners?
Ms. Reed, would you like to respond?
No.
All right, well, considering the protests and considering the requests and, um, considering that this is, has been a long-winded event even though it has been, um, have several different, uh, structures. Um, uh, my motion is to approve application number one nine dash one four seven five four uh, with the following conditions. Uh, all alcohol service will end promptly at eleven PM. Um, and the applicant will, I'm sorry, the licensee will, um, provide a post-event report to the commission within thirty days of the event.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four seven five four is approved with the conditions stated in Vice Chairman's motion.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one four seven five five from Arts Cultural Merchants ETC.
Hello, Nicole Reed, N I C O L E, last name Reed, R E I D, Arts, Culture, Merchants, etc. Group, Secretary Treasurer. To my right is Marty Simjam, uh, manager of a licensee on Hotel Street.
And Ms. Reed, this event is for first Friday, correct, event with a art mural installation?
Correct.
Um, yes. Is there anyone that would like to testify? Please come forward, Ms. Stack.
You swear that the testimony you give today is going to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. Ms. Stack, up again. I still believe ten PM is in line with your prior rulings, um, for the last couple of months and in line with the neighborhood board and in line with the protests that you've seen and heard from residents who are much closer than five hundred feet area around the Shell. So I would like to ask that you cut off at ten PM.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions to testify?
No questions, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Anything?
No.
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four seven five five. The following conditions, um, alcohol service will end promptly at eleven PM and, uh, licensee will provide a post-event report to the commission within thirty days.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one four seven five five is approved with the conditions, um, stated in Vice Chairman's, uh, privilege. And may I ask, Vice Chairman, does that include a post-event?
Yes, sir.
Include it within thirty days. Okay, calling agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one four seven five six from Arts Cultural Merchants ETC.
Afternoon, Commissioner Nicole Reed, R E I D, with Arts, Culture, Merchants, etc. Group. To my right is Marty Simjam, our manager of a licensee on Hotel Street.
Is there anyone who would like to testify on this agenda item, Ms. Stack? Come forward, please.
You swear that the testimony you give today is going to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Hello, Lee Stack again, um, recommending ten PM closure again in line with the protests from the neighborhood, in line with the recommendation of the neighborhood board, which you said you take very seriously.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Commissioners?
Um, before I make my motion, I would like to remind the applicant that, um, though these are being approved for consecutive months, um, the commission does have the authority to recall those approvals or bring you back in to, uh, revise those approvals. Understood? Um, my motion is to approve application number one nine dash one four seven five six. Uh, the following conditions, alcohol service will end promptly at eleven PM and licensee will provide a post-event report to the commission within thirty days.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one four seven five six is approved with the conditions in Vice Chairman's motion.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number one eight dash one four four five one from Nine Six Seven Three Four Tavern Drink.
Sydney Kamau, C I N D Y K A M A U U.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
This is for the current, um, Kailua Pallets?
Preliminary, yes, sir.
Uh, motion to approve transfer application number one eight dash one four four five one.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, transfer application number one eight dash one four four five one is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Maule.
Calling agenda, uh, agenda item number eight, application number one eight dash one three nine four two.
Uh, good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Niobota, I'm here on behalf of Hank's Hot Dog. To my right is Mr. Henry Adamia, that's spelled A D A N I Y A. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Uh, motion to approve application number one eight dash one three nine four two.
Second.
Then move the second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I, I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one eight dash one three nine four two is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Luke. Calling agenda item number nine, temporary license application, application number one nine dash one four seven eight eight of Misty Blue. Mr. Lee, good night, still see you.
What is it? How are you? Uh, good afternoon, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. There are so many missing today.
We do, we do have full-time paid jobs.
We're volunteers, Mister Lee.
And with those full-time paid jobs, there are certain responsibilities that can be-
Sorry about that. James Lee, representing Misty Blue LLC. G B A Misty Blue. Sitting to my right is K one Chambliss. Uh, C H A N E L E S S, the manager, member of management. Uh, we have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you for that information, Mister Lee. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four seven eight eight.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one eight dash one four seven eight eight is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck, please.
Calling agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one four six five seven from Stack Sports.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ms. Nicole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is owner Lisa Pessi Tao Hei Hei Hei. Um, the spelling was already provided in the call reporter. And we have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Uh, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four six five seven.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one four six five seven is approved.
I can actually answer that.
Calling agenda item number eleven. Application number one eight dash one four five three two. Mister Uyoka, what a wonderful day it was today.
Blowout today, blowout.
Going from four to the ten to four.
We've been waiting all day in the parking lot.
Blowout. Three more games this weekend. Good afternoon, Mister Chambers of the Commission, Miss Yri, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Aramark Educational Services LLC. Present to my right, Mister Benjamin Ickstead. He is the Food Service Director at Aramark. Last name spelled P I C K S T E A D.
Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mister Uyoka, or type of action?
This, this is on at Alamo Tower.
It's on Alamo Tower for White Pacific University. Uh, Aramark is a publicly traded company specializing in food services. Um, they do it for universities, colleges, universities, schools, uh, well-known companies.
So this is for like the student cafeteria or the student dining hall?
This is, it's gonna be, it's a kitchen facility only, located near the, the dining hall, but it's this kitchen will not have any service or sale of liquor. Um, it's only for a kitchen facility to be used for catering events. And we will seek approval from the liquor commission before any catering event as well.
Mister Uyoka, a question about the is this area gonna be, it looks like there's another restaurant attached to it or part of it, is it gonna serve or be part of that, or is just, it's just a side kitchen or?
If we wanna serve in that dining area, we're gonna have to get a catering application for it. So right now, we're only licensing the kitchen facility, again, no serving within that, within that specific kitchen area. We'd have to come in and get a catering license for that dining area.
So this is mainly for storage then?
It's, it's for-
If there's no event occurring or no catering, you have to carry it?
If there's no event, we're gonna use it for storage, correct?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four five three two.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one eight dash one four five three two is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number twelve. Request number one eight dash one four two 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 from On Stage Waikiki Beach LLC. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairman, Chairman. My name is Donna Nakamura. I'm appearing on behalf of On Stage Waikiki Beach LLC. I'm the controller.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Ms. Nakamura. Have you, were you able to review the licensing investigative report? Yes. Okay, and you noticed the opinion of our investigator? I did. Okay. Do you have any response to that? I'm sorry that, but I, we didn't realize that we needed to inform the commission, so it was our oversight. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve request number one eight dash one four two two two.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, request number one eight dash one four two 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 is approved.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you again, man. Okay, so let's take agenda item number fourteen out of order. Uh, request number one nine dash one four eight one five from Robin Melchior.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Robin Melch on behalf of the applicant. And I'm here to request for a long-term catering license.
And what's the reason for your request, Ms. Melch?
We have submitted an application for a restaurant general license for that location at the end of April and it still has not been processed. And, you know, um, the, they're ready to open mid-September and there's somewhere we're gonna get um, the license approved by them, especially since it's still being processed yet. Yeah, and it's been almost, it's over three months already and, you know. So that's why we're asking for a long-term catering license, because the applicant already has two other existing restaurants of the same type with the same, you know, they're opening another restaurant of the same type, so we prefer to have a catering license because they already have the staff, the, and, you know, everything down already and they will be using the same people and staff to run the new location.
Thank you.
Right, uh, motion to approve request number one nine dash one four eight one five.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, request number one nine dash one four eight one five is approved. Moving back to agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one four eight one four from Robin Melchior.
Thank you, Robin Melch, again, um, for the applicant requesting that the documents used for the application be used as well for the application for the extended catering license.
Motion to approve request number one nine dash one four eight one four.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one four eight one four is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melch.
Now move down to agenda item number fifteen. Request number one nine dash one four eight four six from Craig Martin.
Good afternoon. Craig Martin for Round Table Pizza Waipahu, Morgan Mello Enterprises Inc. C R A I G M E R T I N. And we're just asking to be able to do a temporary application.
And when was, um, how long ago was it?
It's, um-
It's not like sorry.
It was me, I was more than five days, I think it was seven days from the time.
You didn't, they didn't renew the license, was that it?
That's my understanding, that license expired June thirty.
June thirty, okay, fine, so less than one year, right, very nice, yeah.
Okay, uh, motion to approve request number one nine dash one four eight four six.
Second?
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one four eight four six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one four eight five eight from Keith Kyuchi on behalf of Consolidated Entertainment. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good af, good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Members of the Commission. Keith Kyuchi and Bio Obsiana on behalf of Consolidated Entertainment LLC. To my right is Ratanga, area manager for Consolidated Entertainment LLC. So this is to ask that we be allowed to use the documents and fingerprints on file from both. And they're almost identical for Ward Entertainment and for Tamaka Naali. It's for the new application of the middle of that.
So would you represent to this commission that none of those officers have been convicted of a seller?
Yes, and that's in my letter as well, yes.
It is your letter.
I did see you saying almost identical, what's the discrepancy?
The discrepancy is the entity is different for kidney.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only difference.
But the, but the people in question are all the same.
The people are the same. Yeah, the personal history is the same.
Uh, motion to approve request number one nine dash one four eight five nine.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one four eight five nine is approved. Thank you, Mister Kyuchi, for getting that statement on the record. Unfortunately, your letter doesn't become official part.
I, I understand.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order. Agenda items seventeen through twenty-five inclusive.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda items number six, the adoption of decision in order. Agenda items number seventeen through twenty-five inclusive are approved.
And the article thirty-three out of order.
Uh, yes, thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Members of the commission and Miss Yri. Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Choi on the record for the prosecution in all adjudication matters on the agenda today, number twenty-six through thirty-three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a request to take out of order, uh, agenda item number thirty-three, Times Supermarket.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. And good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Members of the Commission, Mister Yri, Craig Nautzura. Here on behalf of the licensee. And we have here today, uh, an active name is- Mr. Nakamura, could you please say something?
Yeah, you always think of us as friends. I know, I know how they run things in Mali, but we're not there.
Sorry. You make us nervous when you- I've already given the names to the court reporter.
It's not only that we're more relaxed than we are in Malibu, but this is one of the situations where we are.
Thank you, thank you. So with me here today is, uh, Mister Chris Borden, to my right, he's the president of the licensee. This is Mister Gary Shalander, who is the district manager for Times. And Dora Tarmoto, who is the store manager. And we waive the reading of the tractors and plead no contest.
Uh, motion to accept no contest plea.
Second?
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, agenda item number thirty-three, the no contest plea is accepted. Miss showing.
This is a first-time violation for selling liquor to a minor. I recommend a fine of a thousand dollars. There was one past violation that was in two thousand and five, but for adjudication purposes, I recommend a thousand.
Just, just, yeah, just very briefly, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide a brief explanation as to what occurred and to the, the efforts that Times is making to make sure this doesn't happen again. Uh, and I'd like to introduce Mister Shalander to provide that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that we, we have numerous things on the books that we do to, you know, help deter this. We have a cashier training. Three-day cashier training and one day is almost all on procedures and policies and they go through mock, uh, they bring people up and they go through the whole nine yards. Um, they have, we have a monthly test that every cashier has to take, so every single month, no matter how long they've been with us, they, they do a test. We have, uh, mystery audits, where a company goes around, it's an independent company that goes around and does, um, audits for, they do, uh, customer service audits and they also do, uh, liquor compliance audits. And we have a, we have a disciplinary process if you don't pass. It's a one-day suspension for the first violation, all right on down, three-day, five-day. Um, we have, we're implementing on our register system where the cashiers cannot override anymore. It has to be, the manager would have to come in and scan. We have our, uh, front-end supervisor, she goes, goes around and, and monitors the stores as well as myself as a district manager. I go around to the stores and if we see anything, we see anything out of place or if we notice that something's happening that shouldn't be happening, we talk to them. We kind of, our front-end managers also listen for, you know, um, are, are they carding under forty? Our, our policy is forty years and under, we card. So, um, like I said, we, we plead no contest, we have no, no excuse, we just, we have all these things in place and this one just just happened to get through. And we have a thirty-year cashier who lost her ability to be a cashier anymore at this residence, or at this, uh, at this place of business, so.
Yeah, so this cashier was suspended five days and, and demoted to a courtesy clerk, so she can't sell liquor anymore and she also, because of that demotion, uh, she takes a pay cut.
In this specific situation, what occurred?
Um-
Did they ask for insurance?
I'd like me to. Yes, uh, she didn't ask for I D, so, and she didn't ask for the uh, customer's age as well, so.
And this was part of the compliance?
Yes, it was part of the program.
Exactly, that you were notified of. You were notified earlier in the year that we were going to be visiting all of the liquor licenseses to ensure compliance. So, everything that you just represented to this commission has no bearing, because this individual, Liam, is that a female? Young Liam.
What, uh, Liam is a-
Liam is a male.
Liam Irish.
I know. But it's okay. So, she is, uh, excuse me, he is under twenty-one, so he would have produced a vertical I D. So, we appreciate your diligence, but everything that you just represented to this commission has no bearing, it's gone totally out because of the fact that no I D was asked for. You guys would have notified that we would be visiting all of the licensees.
And there's no excuse, obviously, there's no excuse, Mister Chair, um, but as, as-
Hard for this chair to understand why we are having so much service to minors from all of the big prominent box stores. You are not alone. All of your competitors are in here and it's always the same, um, representation.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, you know, obviously, we, we we have a thirty-year employee.
I understand that.
And I think it's-
Let me just, let me just refresh your memory. You had a thirty-year employee in the Connie Owens store that lost her job, so at least you've changed your policy. Because at that time, the owners of Times had a zero tolerance. And that store manager appeared before me at this commission.
Understand, and that's why-
I will echo, um, the cherished sentiment that it worries us when it is, um, somebody like Times Supermarket who has lots of locations, not just throughout City of California, but across the state. And if you folks are not passing these tests, which they are, they're tests. If you folks are failing these tests, that means that the sale of minors to, uh, sale of alcohol to minors is occurring. Because if it's a spot check, which means that's not the only time it's happening, that means that your cashiers are doing this pretty regularly, if when we come to check they're not even asking a twenty-year-old person for an I D. Not even asking them if they're twenty-one. And that worries us because we know that, that it's not, that's not a one-time occurrence. Okay, so-
Understood, and, and-
And we understand you're taking a lot of effort. Maybe think more creatively, um, or, you know, change what you're doing, because it doesn't seem to be working.
And that's why um I think it was important today to have people, not only the the store manager who's who's responsible for implementing the you know the actual things on a day-to-day basis. But Gary is the district manager for Times, so on you know on that level as well as the president of the company is here to understand, you know, exactly this, how serious this is and also let the commission know that we take this very seriously. I mean, we have, you know, the top people in management from Times here to you know, listen to and 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 let the commission know that we take this very seriously, we're doing everything we can and will to everything we can to make sure this doesn't happen again.
We appreciate that and let me echo what my chairman said. So the prosecutor informed us that this is for adjudication purposes, a first-time violation. So my question is to you, how many times have you done this without being caught? This is the time that you got caught. But how many times have your cashier and we all know understand what's going on. They have a certain date, they know what it is, they plug it in for their friends, they plug it in for their family members. They come at nine-thirty 'cause nobody's gonna be around and they know it. And all concern is the safety for the general public. These kids get behind the wheel of a car, right, and kill some innocent people or wipe out a family, which is documented in the newspapers all the time. Then we're not doing our job. So of course, the liability will come back when they trace the sale of the alcohol to your corporation, so.
Look, real if I could to
Yes, please.
Just just one small thing, but we we are, we do have a report that's run, all liquor transactions is the report that's generated. And anytime that we see, if we see multiple times that one cashier uses the same date, it's also something that we will go back and we'll we'll talk to them, so that's one 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 other, I know it's a small thing, but it's something that we
We appreciate every everything that can eliminate this. I mean, even to go to the extent that knows any uh individual in question must call a manager to verify
Sure.
Anything that that will stop the sales to minors and uh protect the general public's safety is A-OK with this commission.
And they have they have implemented their own tests, right? So they have like the people from management are visiting this, you know, and watching and trying to do uh uh purchases and they have um obtained a third party to do mystery shoppers, to go in and and also do the same, yes, so they're really trying to do everything they can.
I have a question, um you said your ID, uh if you look under age of forty, if you're over forty, what is the procedure? Is there an override button? I think you mentioned that there wasn't.
Well, i- in the past, we could, the cashiers could override it. Now it's gonna it's gonna take a manager to come up and so that there's no override, but you can ask for the age if you feel they're over forty and then they if they put that birthdate in, then that will be you know, that that's one way of of you, that's kind of their override would be to ask for the person, but then it wouldn't be a consistent date. And and again, the the managers now have to come and scan themselves, so they have to take the responsibility as a manager to come do the what would be the
The manager would have to override the cashier.
Yes, yes.
Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-three, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
We appreciate your time, thank you very much, thank you.
Better work for the Air Force.
There's a bike downstairs right there. Pushing your credit card, you won't have to deal with the limits highway.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Okay, so let's go back to the beginning of the adjudication agenda which is calling agenda item number twenty-six, Blue Tropics Bar and Grill.
So members of the commission, we're still trying to serve the licensee, so I uh request to continue this to August twenty-third.
Twenty-three?
For lack of service. Yes.
Uh motion to continue agenda item twenty-six, Blue Tropics Bar and Grill to uh August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-six is continued to August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. On agenda item number twenty-seven, Makai Holly.
Hi, George Hirai. G-O-R-E-H-I-R-A-I.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hirai, do you leave reading of the charge?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is a first-time violation for the failure to submit the names of all registered employees. It's an annual list that's required by all licensees.
Uh, Mr. Yeah, Mr. Hirai, how would you like to plead?
Plead.
Uh, so you would like to um accept the charges? Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven, the guilty plea is accepted.
Mr. Choi.
Um, as this is a first-time violation, I recommend a fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Hirai, would you like to make a comment? Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-seven, the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Choi.
Thank you.
On agenda item number twenty-eight, collections wine and bar.
Uh, for this licensee, we are also still serving them the notice of hearings, I request to continue to August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Um, excuse me, one time, uh Ms. Choi, um are the, is this still in business?
I believe so, I think I just To my understanding, yes, but on my um but just our enforcement needed time to more time to serve.
Yeah, okay, I I'm just curious. Thank you.
Uh, motion to continue agenda item twenty-eight, collection wine and bar to August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-eight is continued to August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. On agenda item number twenty-nine, Sukana? Huh?
Yep.
Huh, how's that?
And oh, sorry, this this licensee also our enforcement needed time to serve them, so uh I request to continue to August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-nine, Sukara, Mojo, Maru, Sushi to tw- August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number twenty-nine is continued to August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. On agenda item number thirty-four, Saka Ramen.
May the work reflect wine liqueurs concert for Saka Ramen. Uh, we waived reading of charges and today we're gonna plead to we're gonna pu admit both charges and request that the penalty phase be continued to uh August thir- twenty-third, August thirtieth.
Uh, I have no objection, either date is fine.
August thirtieth.
Yes, August thirtieth is fine.
Okay, um what do I do with the charges?
Yes.
Um, motion to accept the uh admittance admit plea from uh for for charge one.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, charge number one, the violation is accepted.
And uh motion to accept the plea for charge two.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, charge number two is accepted.
And um motion to continue this matter for um for penalty fees to August thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty, charge number one and charge number two will be continued to August thirty for the penalty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-one, Lap Lounge.
Understood, Mr. Chairman's permission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. Would ask this be continued to September twenty-seventh, my client's not available today.
Mr. Choi, I have no objection. Motion to continue agenda item thirty-one, Lap Lounge to September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number thirtys- thirty-one is continued to September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Lap Lounge.
Again, a good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. For the same reason, we also ask this may be continued to September twenty-seventh.
Mr. Choi, any objection?
No objection.
Uh, motion to continue agenda item thirty-two, Lap Lounge to September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number thirty-two, Lap Lounge is continued to September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith Kyuchi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Ms. Hira.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes, uh just very briefly, uh in in the way of an update. Uh, this pertains to the recommended fine schedule that the Court Council has been using for adjudications. We we sort of uh uh discovered that the last evaluation and overhaul of the fine schedule was conducted sometime in twenty-ten and minor changes have been and additions have been made periodically uh since then. We thought it was an appropriate time to go over the entire uh recommended fine schedule, top to bottom and uh adjust some items to reflect uh current compliance priorities. So um obviously, these are gonna be, the Court Council will will begin using the new fines, some of them will be uh virtually the same as the old as the existing fines you've been accustomed to hearing. Uh however, uh there's uh certain things that um certain new procedures that we are gonna institute and the first being that uh for egregious first violations of a serious nature and with the commission's uh with administrator's approval, uh Court Council may recommend at a level higher than that first level that appears on the schedule but it will uh be required to state the reason for the elevated recommendation. In the alternative, uh the uh Court Council may advise the commission what the first level amount is on the recommended fine schedule and then affirm that pursuant to HRS two eighty-one ninety-one, that the commission has the discretion to impose a monetary penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars or suspend or revoke the license. And of course, for any of these items, the commission also retains the discretion to modify up or down or what have you the the recommendation that Court Council is gonna be making, but we wanted to sort of standardize the procedure somewhat. And then finally, um uh effective July twenty-fifth, the administrator has approved the use of a five-year window in making penalty recommendations for repeat violations. In each instance, um uh Corporation Council will be required to state that the prior uh violations were uh committed by the same owner. And that's just um a heads up what's gonna be happening um going forward. And um there really should be no uh very little difference for you because you always do retain that um that discretion to modify the penalty as you as you do we're trying to standardize the process and update it, 'cause some of the uh penalties have been somewhat underpriced, we feel in terms of the recommendation, feel pardon that expression.
Thank you, Ms. Hira.
That's all.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other business report, the commission? Thank you all for coming.